I will call to order this meeting of the East Hampton Planning Board for Tuesday, May 3rd, 2016. Is there anyone here to speak to something that is not on the agenda? Alright, moving right along to our meeting minutes for the April 19th meeting. Did everyone have a chance to look at them?
Yep.
Any errors, omissions, changes?
Nope.
A motion to approve the meeting minutes from April 19th?
Second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
opposed, abstain? No. Alright. Oh, Chat will abstain. He was not present. Good catch, Chat. No A and Rs? So, moving along to new business. Site plan approval for Five Chapman Ave., Michael Bear. Come up to the podium and tell us what you're doing, what you're planning on.
Yeah, there's some, yeah, you can...
Okay.
Hold on. Thank you. I got it.
Thank you.
Supplemental information being provided by the...
Okay.
Thank you.
You guys are giving a run-in?
Mm-hmm.
Looking to open a restaurant at my address at Five Chapman Avenue. Downtown business-owned property. I did have a prior site plan approval for a restaurant and a bed and breakfast on the second floor. That site plan had expired. There has been some alterations to it, and that's what she said for you. So, plans for a restaurant at that location.
Can I confirm you're Michael Bear?
Yes. Sorry.
And Five Chapman, as you just stated, that is in fact your residence as well?
Yes, yep.
And so, I was trying to figure out from the drawing, is this all indoor? Is there an outdoor component, or...
There is outdoor seating. That is accompanied by, yes.
Okay.
That was approved by the liquor license.
Okay, so, maybe if you come over and show us, I'm just trying to figure this out.
I mean, the key's small, because...
Yeah. So, on here...
Oh, I didn't have bigger colored ones for this?
There may be larger ones that were filed, but just didn't get to us, I don't know.
Alright, so, this is a patio area on the side of the house?
Yeah, okay.
That area is licensed, and so is this.
Okay, is this for seating, or is this...
There's for seating.
Okay, there's patio for seating there, too?
Yeah.
This is all indoors, right?
This is all indoors.
Okay.
And this is the only area that's licensed, so not the entire building.
Okay.
So, this is, this rear component is the commercial section...
Yep.
To the mixed-use building.
Okay, and so, this is all the residence?
My private residence, yes.
And, but there's a separate kitchen and everything, right?
Yes.
It's all, everything takes place in that area outside there, okay.
Still waiting for approval, and as you'll see, like, from the health department, my plans have not gone before her, because I'm still selling up with the structural changes that have to take...
Yeah, you can go back up there.
Just so we can record it.
No, it's fine. It's just that the microphones, they don't, they're not projecting in the room, but they do pick up audio for the video, so...
So, yes, the, what will be the actual restaurant is vacant space at this time. The plan is supposed to go before the board of health. At the moment, I'm waiting for my architect and the building inspector to settle on some issues in regards to the structural changes in the building to make it commercial use.
Okay. And...
I do have architects' plans for the restaurant, which are in that patio packet as well.
Okay.
So, there's a line drawing of the restaurant plans.
Right.
With the equipment that I already own.
Okay.
Is your main intended entrance from Union or Chapman?
Um, actually, both. So, there's an entrance, there's a sidewalk entrance on Chapman, and I have an accessibility to a parking lot that is behind me on Union Street. So, there is a 42-seater parking lot directly abiding by property.
I was on the planning board when we gave you the original, uh...
Yes.
Permit?
Yep.
You had a bunch of motorcycles back there at the time. Is that where your kitchen's gonna be?
Yes.
Where your restaurant's gonna be, where those motorcycles were, in the back there?
What used to be my former motorcycle shop, display area.
I think, if I remember correctly, the biggest concerns at the time was the parking on Chapman Avenue by the fire department.
Yes.
Because you said, you said that trucks couldn't get through there, if you had parking on both sides, if I remember right?
Well, there is no, there's only parking on one side of the street as it exists now.
Okay.
And then, part of that site plan approval process, the planning board requested that I tear down about a 550-square-foot of garage to access the parking lot behind me. So, that would leave the tension on the parking on the street.
There was also some concern with the guy in the back. You were trying to make some kind of regulations for parking spaces in that, in that, uh...
Yes.
Parking lot. How was that, how was that working off?
It has since changed ownership of the building. So, at one point, I was renting parking spaces from him. The change of ownership, I think, at this point, I don't have to lease the spaces. I have an easement to the property now that's heated to the property for use of the parking lot. And then, I am downtown business-owned, so I am exempt from parking regulations as well. I'm hoping for pedestrian traffic. I'd like to be a neighborhood spot. It's really what I'm after. I mean, if you look at the plans, it only seats 32 to 34 people as they exist right now. There may be subtle alterations once I go through the health department. You know, depending on what you may require or not require from me. But, the capacity is low. I'm not looking for a super-busy, bustling business, just a little, small, intimate place.
What about deliveries? What do you anticipate for that sort of stuff?
There's already delivery trucks on the street every day for Sheldon Falls.
Yeah.
So, there's always the food service group truck, or like, Chapman Ave. already.
But what do you expect for your restaurant?
Minimal deliveries, you know, one day a week.
Yeah.
So...
During, during business hours, or in the evenings, or...
Well, I'll be opening evenings. I plan to be opening evenings, maybe a Saturday and a Sunday during the day. But, yeah, deliveries will be during the day, during, you know, business hours. Like I said, the food trucks now are smaller. I don't know if, you know, it won't be an issue.
Yep, and there's space there in front for loading and unloading, or in the driveway?
Definitely. I have driveway access that goes right back to the place, and then I also have a four-foot-wide sidewalk that runs the full length of the house as well.
Okay.
So, should be easy enough for them.
Am I reading correctly here that you've had your liquor license approved?
Yes.
And I, there were a bunch of concerns in here from the health department?
Yes, and that was because I haven't dropped my plans before her. And that's because I've been trying to navigate with the building inspector over some issues that arose. So, my architect in here settles those. Once that's completed, I will bring the plans to her for review.
Okay, so she hasn't seen the plans yet. It's under, and when do you think that's gonna...
Well, actually, I should have a response in the next week, so...
The plans will be complete to her next week?
Then, I'm hoping that I have an answer from the building department within the next week, and then I can take the plans to her, yes.
You said open weeknights, and then maybe weekends during the day. Are you planning on doing seven days, do you think, or no?
I still live there, so it's my residence as well.
Yeah.
I'm not looking to, you know, I'm thinking like a Thursday, you know, Friday, Saturday, you know, type of thing. Like a Thursday, Friday night, maybe a Saturday, Sunday brunch, that kind of a thing, but...
What kind of hours do you think you're planning on doing?
Oh, I would do, I'm thinking, you know, five to 10-ish, somewhere in that range, five to 11:00. Like I said, more of a neighborhood, you know, little hangout place.
One of the other health departments went with the smoker?
Yeah, I had some concerns in regards to my smoker. I did send a little bullet point list for the smoker that I currently own. I will gladly remedy anything that cheat the, the requirement.
12.95D talks about the adequacy of methods for disposal in the site plan approval criteria. You commented here that you're gonna be using trash barrels with lids attached to wheels. Are these just the standard residential green ones that everyone has?
That everyone has, and...
And that's gonna be adequate for...
Some restaurants in town, I think, so I'm assuming, yes. My answer to that would be yes.
Yeah, because she was...
And there again, I mean, I'm having a limited menu in a small place, so I'm not expecting a lot of waste. I'm really not, so...
I see you talk about the smoke issue as well, which the health inspector raised as an issue.
She has some concerns, yes.
And you've been smoking at your residence, which sounds weird.
No, I know.
For over three years, you say?
Three years, with that unit, with the unit that I hope to use for the restaurant, so...
Have you actually spoken to any of the neighbors?
Oh, yeah, absolutely. They're actually pretty excited about the project, so...
There was, let's get back to the trash. The health, they also have concern on how the trucks will get access to the back, and how they, how they will keep vermin and other animals from getting into those barrels. Because you're not using a dumpster, right?
I would prefer not to. Though, those trash containers on the wheels are easier to use. I would roll them to either the curb on Chapman Ave. side, or the parking lot side behind me, depending upon where the, where the trash company wants to pick it up. But, I mean, there's already dumpsters in the whole neighborhood getting emptied. I mean, I think there's one behind Snap Fitness that gets emptied at 4:30 in the morning.
Right, but her concern was the lids. Are they gonna be secured enough for...
I would drill a fenced area around it, so it would be that morning I would have to get up. Like, my trash, my residential pickup is in between like 8:00 and 8:30 every Monday morning. So, yeah, I'd have to get up at 7:30 in the morning, unfence them, roll them to run the truck out.
Okay.
Is there a public bathroom in that design? I didn't see...
There's two. So, yeah. And that's why I haven't been to the health department yet, because I'm still selling things with the building department in regards to... Yes, it will be two bathrooms, handicap accessible.
Did you say handicap accessible just now?
Yes, of course.
And, and the entrances as well?
Yes. Yep, sidewalks, the entrances, everything's in...
Ramps?
I don't need ramps because the building's at ground level. It's a grade, so ramps aren't necessary.
You mentioned something had changed with respect to the parking lot in the back. You no longer have the leased spaces, is that right?
The, the property has since sold.
Okay.
So, the new owner of the property?
Yeah.
I mean, he's willing to rent them to me. Like I said, I have an easement, you know, onto his property now, so... It hasn't come in conversation with him. I mean, he knows that I'm opening a restaurant.
Yeah.
You know, and it hasn't, hasn't come up, so...
I just want to reiterate, an "in" is no longer any part of it?
Who?
An "in", I-N-N.
No, 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 no. As I, as I was developing that project with an architect, it was getting a little too messy, and I was, you know, sacrificing too much personal space and compromising the structural integrity of the home. It was a romantic idea of a bed and breakfast, but its practicality was, uh...
How many people do you think you'll be able to seat?
As the plans sit now, like, 34 people. And there is an outside patio seating, which would bring me between, I don't know, 18 to 20 more people outside, weather permitting, obviously.
And you said there are 42 parking spots outside?
Yes.
Just for a clarification, those 42 spots are in the lot behind your building that you have an easement agreement to, but you don't have a lease agreement?
Spots, right.
Right. He's willing to rent them, you know, but at this point, he and I just have a couple...
Yeah.
I think we have a...
There's only Tuesday nights, or like, the busiest night in that parking lot. For the hours of my operation, that parking lot's pretty much empty.
So, we would have some minimum parking requirements, I think, for that number of occupancy, but I'm a little bit confused, Jessica. Are you saying that those, without a lease, those won't qualify? Is that...
I'm just trying to clarify the information, so, it sounds like there used to be a lease agreement with the former property owner, but the property has changed hands, and there's not a lease agreement in place now. So, as effectively as it stands before you right now, there is no off-site parking because there is no lease agreement in place. But there is an easement that would allow that to happen in the future, if the paperwork...
Yeah, there's looking at that, you know, the handicap walkway from that parking lot.
Thank you, I appreciate the clarification.
So, you're gonna go through with the new owners to...
I, I, I can, if that's what the request is. I mean, you know...
Well, I mean, part of our determination is whether we think there needs to be additional parking. I mean, in the previous plan, I think they required at least of four off-street parking spaces.
Yes.
It's downtown business, so he doesn't have to have a specific number, but we are still, you know, concerned with vehicular and pedestrian movement and that sort of stuff under the site plan approval, so we can still require some sort of off-site parking to sort of minimize the on-street parking, if that's something we think is important.
34 people. I'd like you to be full.
Well, so, but 34, and then you said that, that's not counting the patio seating though, is that right?
Another 18.
Another 18 for that?
I mean, think, I think Galaxy, I'm just guessing, is probably around the same seat capacity of around...
50?
50, yeah.
I would guess.
I mean, it would seem to me...
Their rear patio's a lot...
I mean, they've got a patio up front, and they have the bar, and they've got the restaurant.
Right.
So, I'm guessing they're probably somewhere between the 40 to 50 capacity at Galaxy.
Right.
But they have parking right, directly out front.
Yeah.
So...
It's a tough call. I, I feel like it, it does need some minimal number, but I don't wanna apply an undue burden.
You're gonna have people working for you, too, I would imagine. If you have 34 people sitting there having dinner, and you're gonna have somebody else, so you're gonna have to, what, hire two or three people, probably?
Yeah, the employees will park in my actual driveway to my residence. So, none of the employees will actually, like, honestly, they won't be taking up the parking spaces on the street. But I do, my personal residence driveway is rather long, so it'll accompany the one or two employees that I have working for me.
So, we're looking at maybe 52, 53 with you. So, have these numbers in any way changed since the original permit, out of curiosity? That's what you told the board you expected then, as well?
I think back then, I was looking for 34 to 36 people.
Yeah, but I can't recall. It was an old restaurant. It wasn't like a, like a...
It said there, the previous decision says 32 to 36.
Yeah. It wasn't 50.
So, I think maybe six.
So, just to, for a point of reference, the, the parking regulations in the zoning, if this was a restaurant that was being built on a new site without anything else on it, the requirements would be one for each four seats of total seating capacity, plus one for each two employees on shift of greatest employment.
So...
So, four divided by...
15.
Yeah, it's some, 12 to 15 somewhere in there.
About 15 spaces.
But there is on-street parking on Union Street around the corner.
Yep.
And it seems that there is on-street parking on one side of Chapman, although I would wanna, you know, I don't know if that's a true fact or not, but that's...
Now, am I being confused, too? There was something about tearing down a garage?
Yes, I, initially, when I came before the board for parking lot access in the rear, they requested that I tear off 550-square-foot building to create the easement and the egress. So, I have a handicap egress now for that parking lot behind me.
And it's access, it's not additional parking, it's flowed through?
Right.
Okay, I understand now.
And it concerns about trash storage, and, yeah, so, the building came off, because my building took up the entire rear width of my lot. So, there's, there was no place for a pass-through...
Yep.
To the lot behind me.
And the, the rear lot back there, have you had discussions with the new owner about the possibility of leases?
We did, but we discussed the four.
Okay.
The original, traditional four spaces that I was originally approved for. If you require that, then I will, I could uphold that.
Yeah.
I don't know if he'd be willing, I have not had that conversation with him in regards to renting more.
Yeah. I mean, do you...
And I would actually feel a little uncomfortable of that, because it's, you're asking, I mean, downtown business-owned, to be renting 15 parking spaces from another property owner, you know, Coco doesn't have to do that, Galaxy didn't have to do that, you know, I, I...
Yeah, no, I mean, I understand.
So, I'd be happy with the four, because I've already, I've already conceded to that number, but 15 spaces in someone else's property seems a little excessive to me.
Right, well, there's a reason that downtown business doesn't have the same parking requirements, but it, it does still have the same concerns, and it all depends on where it's located.
And I would make a concession.
Various other factors.
I would agree to that concession.
I'm struggling a little with that number. I do, I do think that a minimum of four is required. I'm inclined, and we're looking at another business, we, we just came up with a number somewhere between, you know, I don't know, 12 and 15, if what... So, I think a meeting point is appropriate. I'm thinking maybe more like six. Do you think that'd be a possibility?
I could address that with him.
I mean, that's arbitrary by my decision. What do you guys think?
I mean, I...
Parking's gonna, no matter what, it's gonna be an issue there. I would rather see if he can get 12 or 14, but that's gonna be a, a dream.
Yeah, that's...
And then I'd be...
Well, and also, I mean, you're, you're holding him to a, a standard for a different...
Yeah, I know.
Zone, which I don't know that we need to go that high. I mean, part of the problem with all of it, I think, is that whether you have four, six, eight, or 10, people are probably gonna be inclined to park on Chapman Street, which...
Well, I actually know, because the, I'm, the back of my building is, the back of my property is kinda be the face of the, of the restaurant.
That's sort of the main entrance?
Uh, I have two. I have a sidewalk on Chapman Ave., and then one to that parking lot, and then...
So, it would be an advantage to have parking there?
Yes, and then there's, and then there's also the Biggie's parking lot there, and then there's one behind the Indian Restaurant, but I still think Biggie's owns as well. There's a lot of parking on the backside of my building.
So, where...
We can't be condoning, you know, parking on Biggie's property.
Right, you can't use someone else.
There's plenty of on-street parking on Union Street, though. There's no doubt about that.
Okay, so, I just wanna make sure, because I was a little, it didn't quite make sense. Did you just say that the, while both are accessible, both sides are accessible, you see the Chapman side as being sort of the main face?
Okay, for pedestrian, uh, no, the rear.
The Chapman is the rear, so the main face is the Union.
Yeah.
Can...
Chat, all you, all you can actually see for the restaurant on Chapman Ave. is a four-foot-wide sidewalk to, like, a little tiny space in back.
Right, because the face...
So, it's more pedestrian-friendly from the Chapman.
Can you come show us on this drawing where, where the other entrance would be, because I'm just having trouble. So, I see the entrance over here. This is the Chapman side, right?
Yeah, so the sidewalk on Chapman Ave. is long, it's over 100 feet long.
Yep.
And comes all the way back into here. Now, you do walk through this licensed area...
Yep.
With the patio tables?
Yep.
This is the restaurant, and then here, you come out the side door. This is all my driveway, so we were discussing, like, there's my trash bins. You know, they get rolled to the curb. This long driveway is where my employees would park.
Where, where's, that's the trash inside there, right?
It's fenced, it's fenced, yeah, yeah. And then, there's a sidewalk that goes right through here.
Yeah.
So, when you're staring at the, at the back of the building, you can see this sidewalk coming down into the space.
But, so, customers are gonna be able to come in here and go through the kitchen and...
Oh, there's, there's, there's walls.
There's walls.
If you, there it is, so... If you're looking at it, this is the sidewalk coming down from Chapman Ave.
Yeah.
So, you come into the door, here's seating, so this is walled off. So, there's, there's the handicap bathroom, USX, and then here's the other entrance. This entire space is only 800 square feet. It's tiny.
It's never a big backdoor.
No, it's, I'm basically doing a food truck as far as, as far as the size of my kitchen.
This comes out.
So, it's very...
Here.
Yeah.
But it doesn't quite line up.
No, it doesn't.
So, if this, I'm just trying to figure out...
Oh, they're, it's different for the size of paper, that's all.
No, I know, I'm just trying to figure out where this door...
I did figure it out the other day, because it took me months to believe it that way.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, that, that way. So, this side door?
This is this.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, yeah, okay, so the doors were backwards.
Yeah.
Alright, so this is the door that goes out the sidewalk to Chapman Ave.
Yes, and then the Union's...
This is the door. Trash will be out here, kind of in the fenced-in area, you come in the entrance there.
Sidewalk here.
But, this is...
Here. That's the fence...
No, 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 no.
This is the trash, isn't it?
This is this.
Right.
This is this. This is this. What's this?
That's the fenced-in area where...
That's the fenced-in area.
Yeah.
And it's a porch?
No, no, it's, it's driveway, grade level. It's only fenced in, because I can, I was approved for patio space on this side as well.
I see. Oh, for your liquor license?
Yes.
I see.
Okay, so you might have, you might have seating over here, you might not?
Yeah.
Okay. But, so, from the orientation perspective, you're, there is sort of a logical entrance from that Union Street side.
Yeah.
Yes, please, thank you, sorry.
Got you running around.
So, I mean, I guess that does alleviate some of the concerns about whether people are just gonna park on Chapman anyway.
And then there, there's also, there's an abandoned lot that abuts my property, that has like another 20 spaces on that, but there again, that's someone else's property.
Yeah, we can't use that.
So, how's the back lot accessed?
Uh, Union Court, so right past Snap Fitness.
Alright.
There's a, a...
I see. It's not like they're driving through the site to get...
Right across, they're small, I mean...
Yeah.
I mean, there certainly is on-street parking down there, in general, on Union.
Absolutely.
And like I said, my intent is for pedestrian traffic as well. Like, I wanna be the neighborhood, a little tiny.
I mean, that being said, I do think that it's, it's, it's important to have some lot spots as well. But I don't know where we wanna fall on that number.
It seems like he's willing to go with four. I'm not sure that there would be any more availability if we were to, to push for more, and I wouldn't wanna put for too much, because, you know, we wanted to...
I'm paying for each one of those spots every month.
We wanna balance it, meet the needs of the community, and make sure safety needs are met.
Yeah.
Yeah, but how, can they get seven in there?
That's up for him, the property owner. I, I don't wanna speak on his behalf. I mean, my, at one point, when I discussed with him, when the egress was going in, we discussed four. That's, that's our discussion. Like, you know, there was never a proper, with the second property owner. I never had a lease with him. He's willing to, I mean, when I had, like, verbal conversation, but it just, it never manifested into like an actual lease agreement for those places.
I mean, what do you folks think? Do, I mean, do you think that four spots in the lot is enough with the on-street parking on Chapman and Union and...
Yeah.
And traffic?
Yeah, if they do go any more, now you're putting a financial burden on the guy, I think.
I modified to four as well.
Anybody else have any thoughts?
I don't think there should be more.
You think it should be more?
Yeah. But I'm gonna be outvoted anyway, so that's just my opinion.
I could say it needs eight or 10, but, you know...
Well, I mean, I think he would prefer he had eight or 10, too, just not have to pay for them, so...
That's the point.
So, that's...
You know, I mean, it's unfeasible financially.
And I mean, it is...
I'm gonna keep it at four.
That balance, but not so much that we're avoiding safety needs. The safety needs have to get met before everything else. And I think four hits that number as a minimum. I'd prefer to see six, 15.
Right.
But I think the four is a minimum.
Yeah.
Below that, I think it's a safety burden that we shouldn't apply. It's a bit arbitrary, I admit, but...
Safety on behalf of the fire trucks access, or safety on behalf of, what's the safety, I guess?
Yes, would be my answer.
The fire trucks?
Yeah.
Well, with the fire department...
There's already parking on that one side of the street, it's...
They didn't raise that as an issue right now. That, that wasn't...
Comments aren't there.
I wonder if I did it, it didn't go with this time, but I did it last time.
Yeah.
But we have to look at the application. I mean, I, I understand where you're going in that you've got sort of the historical knowledge, but at the same time...
I mean, who knows what's changed in the interim, and so, I mean, I, I don't have a problem with the fire truck issue, because the fire department didn't.
You've seen all their comments?
Fire department didn't respond.
They didn't have comments.
They had none.
I mean, I think there was something...
Yeah, the, the main concern was from the health department, not just because she hasn't seen, she hasn't been properly for her yet.
I mean, my, my only concern with the parking is just, you know, trying to prevent Chapman from becoming overly congested and, you know...
Probably agree.
Whatever, but I think everyone sort of has that same interest, and if there's available parking somewhere else, that probably alleviates that. Or at least limits it as much as there is gonna be anywhere else in downtown business.
You wanna go to Louviers or someplace like that?
Exactly.
You gotta find a spot near, out on Hoyland Street or Maple Street, lot.
Right, it's, it's sort of inherent to the downtown business, right?
I think just sort of, just to make note, that the downtown business zone, pretty sure, ends at this property.
Okay.
This is the last one.
Yeah.
This is the last downtown business parcel on Chapman Ave.
Gotcha.
And then, after that, it's residential.
Okay. But it's not residences right now, is that right?
I have no residence abiding by property.
I think you said 105 feet or something like that? Just the nearest residence?
So, that, that just, I'm just saying, that may make this different than other downtown businesses that are kind of more in the heart of the downtown zoning district? So that, that just, I'm just saying, that may make this different than other downtown businesses that are kind of more in the heart of the Downtown Zoning District.
Right.
Rather than being sort of on the edge with a residential zoning district. And that may be where some of that history in terms of requiring some off-street parking may have come from, because it's kind of on the edge of the district.
Would you be able, do you think to get any sort of signage or something for those parking spots in the lot?
I'd look up to him. I, I would assume if I'm forced to be renting spaces from him-
Right.
That would entitle me to put some signage on it.
Yeah.
I would assume. Um, there again, that's up to the property owner.
Right.
Like what he'll concede, you know?
I mean-
I mean, obviously, obviously, yes, if I was renting spaces, I would want signage on it.
Right.
And I'd want the, you know, designated right behind my building, you know?
Right. Well, and obviously you have an incentive to encourage people to park over there, it's a better spot for you to have them coming in from, I think that makes sense. I mean, to me, I think if there's four, you know, marked spots in a lot right next to the building, it's a downtown business, there's on-street parking in the area, that, I think that-
Should be sufficient.
Concur.
That makes me comfortable on that front. Do we, do we feel okay with that? Chat, are you willing to reluctantly go along with that, or you want to dig in your heels?
I'm going to dig in my heels.
Okay. Can we move on to the smoker issue and see if anybody has a-
So, just to be clear, so it seems that there's-
We haven't wrote anything, we're, I'm, I'm just moving along here to other issues.
Okay. So you have, seems to have a four-zero on that one condition. I'm just trying to keep track of potential conditions for the decision, so, okay, alright.
And if-
I'll be four-one.
Alright, so at least four spaces, and hopefully-
Well, we're not there yet. I'm just trying to figure out where people feel, if we need to have more discussion about that, if we can try on the next issue. What are people thinking about the smoker? I mean, it seems like it was a big concern for the health department, but I also don't think the health department has really received much information, um, yet from the applicant. And I think also, Jessica, will the health department have jurisdiction over that as part of the restaurant, right?
Absolutely, absolutely. She has to approve-
Everything.
The entire operation, right?
A kitchen plan before I can, so that's, I just hope that if sh- when you work with her on a kitchen plan, it doesn't somehow impede this decision somehow.
Right.
But-
Is there a preferred order of operations there typically? Is it best to have that done before this process?
It depends on the applicant.
I mean, my inclination with this, since he's been using a smoker and he hasn't had complaints yet, and clearly the health department has an idea of what the potential pitfalls are and possible solutions with a maintenance plan and things like that.
Yeah, and there's different styles of smoker, like I said, like in that, like typically they're all wood automated mines, yeah.
I mean, my inclination would be to do something similar to what they did in the last one, which is specifically state that he has to comply with board of health requirements.
Right.
But, I mean, we can even include-
I have to anyways, I mean, she's looking for a fridge.
But we can include, we can include even specific mention of the smoker.
Yeah, because she was looking for a remedial type-
For exhaust system.
Right.
Exhaust for keeping down-
And maintenance and things like that, but I think more than anything she was looking for information from the applicant, which she hadn't gotten, so-
Right.
I'm hopeful that maybe this isn't, you know, as bad a scenario as she was anticipating.
I think on our end, mentioning it as you described, covers, covers it.
And then she can make her determination about that. But she also stated that she is requiring a smoke remedial system in place prior to any approval from her office.
Yeah, that was several years ago though, wasn't it?
It does have a filtration system on it, whether it be touch dangerous, it's a commercial-
Yeah, that was September of fifteen.
And that, and that memo was directed towards the building inspector, so-
Right, yeah.
That's like kind of an internal system. I, again, sort of just making clear where the jurisdictional boundaries are, that you're concerned about uses that are happening inside the building, but not necessarily the systems in place inside the building. And that's your jurisdiction to make sure that those uses happening inside the building aren't having an impact to abutting properties and not impacting public health, safety, welfare.
Right.
So I would recommend against putting something specific about a remedial system, but acknowledging at least that, that the smoke could create a nuisance and that-
It has to comply with the-
It has to be comply, it has to comply with the health department.
Yeah, the, the amount of smoke when it's actually, uh, when you're actually using wood chips for smoking, it's like, like that, like a pellet stove. Like it's a gentle, soft way.
How, how does the smoking, I mean, is this something you're smoking during the day so that you have it prepared for you to use that night, or you-
Yes, I'd be smoking during the day, so it'd be ready for dinner at night.
Okay. I mean, does anybody else have any other thoughts about the smoker? I'm inclined to think that that's more in the health department's jurisdiction as well, but I'm happy to entertain questions or-
Would you be, would you, would be using the smoker on a day, on, on the days that you're going to be open?
On the days that I'm going to be open, correct.
So it would be limited to that?
Yeah, so yeah, I would assume on the days that I'm not open, yeah. Unless it was for personal use and I was having a friend over or something, but yeah. Like I'm using it now, you know, so.
Right, there is that fact too. And then I think the only other thing the health department raised was with the trash and removal.
We talked about.
Which we've covered in a fenced area and that sort of thing.
And there again, at her discretion, if she wants it relocated somewhere else on the property, I'll oblige, obviously.
I mean, that also sort of falls, I mean, we're concerned with sort of protecting it and keeping it enclosed, but if she wants it moved somewhere else, that's part of the health department regulations, that might-
That impacts the site plan, because you've approved it to be in a certain location.
Right. But I mean, we can very well, I mean, I don't know what the rules are as far as proximity of your dumpster to your kitchen or anything like that, so-
No, but I think if it's within that general area, that's fenced-in area, as long as it's within there, it's fine. But if it all of a sudden gets moved to a different part of the site-
Then he's going to have to come back.
Uh, I mean, I know it's the site plan, but my previous site plan, that's where it was approved.
Yeah. Alright, does anybody else have any other questions or concerns about this from the board?
I want to just ask a couple of quick ones here.
Yep.
The, the twelve point nine site plan approval criteria talks about integrating your development into the existing landscape and design down there. Do you have any vegetative plans for the front?
Uh, yeah, actually, uh, it was marked on the, on the key. So yeah, there's a, I have perennial gardens surrounding my whole property.
Okay.
And actually a lot of maple trees for as tiny as my lot is. I probably have the tiniest lot on the street, I have all the trees.
There was lighting.
Oh, yeah, lighting.
Lighting?
Oh, lighting, yes. Um, I have exterior lighting, um, pole lamps around the house, um, exterior leaves at all the doorways. Um, and of course, what will be in the restaurant will have all the emergency lighting that's required by me with the building department.
Coming from that Union Street lot, is that area all lit, there's streetlights there, right?
Yeah, yeah, there's a pole for that.
Oh, for that lot, okay.
And then I have exterior lighting on my building-
Yeah.
To establish the boundaries of where my property is, and then also, um, there'll be a sign, an assignment light out there. That I also have in my, uh, plans.
You still let people live in there, when this restaurant's going to be going on, or?
Um, it's just, it's a single-family home, I do have a roommate, yes, I have a couple of roommates.
Oh, it's not going to be an inn or anything like that?
No, it's not going to be in there.
No limbs on the table.
There's no transit lodging there.
Yeah.
I guess that went by the wayside.
Anybody from the public here to speak on this? Do, would you like to say something?
Um, yeah, my name is Lisa Fusco.
Hey, why don't you come up here just so we can get at the microphone?
Hello, my name's Lisa Fusco, and I live in Northampton. I wrote on the thing there, one thirty Cross Path Road. Um, I've been friends with Michael for six or seven years, and he's, you know, kind of metamorphosized with this process in terms of what he finally came up with. And this is the idea that I really fully agree with, so, and we're best friends, so, um, I've been with him my whole way through this process. A couple of things just to clarify, either he forgot or you guys didn't know. With regard to the barrels, um, and I've owned commercial property here since two thousand and two. Have had to work with the building department, didn't have to do any site plan stuff, but-
Near East Hampton?
Near East Hampton, yeah. And, um, love the old mayor, love the current mayor, you know, really, uh, any issues that I ever had were immediately addressed, so uh, it's been a pleasure doing business here. And I still, I own Casey's Big Dog Salon up the road. With regard to the barrels, when I had my property on Main Street, I did, they're, they're tall, lidded barrels that you see. They have a metal rod on the bottom where the truck can actually pick it up and bring it in. Um, these are very critter-proof. I was a game warden for twenty years, mass environmental police, and I know how raccoons get in and squirrels get in. And the way they kind of hook over, and I don't know if it's the way they're balanced or their height, but they really are good at keeping the critters out. So I would feel comfortable with that. Um, with deliveries, um, he is right, you know, Sherman Falls does get some deliveries, but a lot of our stuff, I'm going to be helping cook. And we're, there's a, a place called Restaurant Depot, they have about forty locations throughout the country, it's cash and carry. Um, they have great meats there, um, they have a lot of produce, so a lot of our stuff is going to be making a weekly trip down there, um, to do that. And, uh, you do save a lot of money. I don't know if you guys have ever heard of Pix Place in Hoy Oak, I think it used to be called the Locker Room, but, um, he's a friend of mine, and he started going there, just doing the cash and carry, saving three hundred dollars a week. He does a lot of food, a lot of business, but he's saving three hundred dollars a week. Uh, between there and probably Arnold's Meats, um, we'll just be doing it ourselves. And then for produce, again, we're small, so, um, and they're a minimum order, Cisco I think is two hundred and fifty dollars or three hundred. That, they're not the kind of company that we're going to be big enough to meet their minimum requirements, so I really don't think there's going to be any big delivery truck issue. Galaxy also, um, Jessica, you had mentioned his, um, outdoor seating in the front and then his indoor, he does have a beer garden back, and I would say that's probably thirty people. So I, I think he's a fair amount higher than what Michael's is. And, uh, we, we need to show the health inspector the smoking unit, it's small, it's, um, it's ten square feet. And, in, in our discussion about, well, how do we deal with a smoking issue, um, how do we put something on it? But it's also a propane unit, it's eighty thousand BTUs, so, and I have pictures, I gave to Michael, but it kind of looks like a big coffin on wheels, you can tell. Um, it's about six feet long, the cooking area is ten square feet. So what's heating that is the propane. There's a V-shaped trough that runs the length of it, it slides out, we put our soaked wood chips in there. And generally don't reload it. Uh, when smoking meets two or three hours really imparts that smoke, especially if it's on like a whole pig, um, you don't really need it much more. In fact, sometimes you don't really want it, because then it's like, wow, this is really, really smoky. And you just want it smoky, you want it that good flavor. Um, but we will talk with Jackie, and, um, I've spoken with her before, I think she's great, and he said, what do you think? I said, I think she's firm but fair, and she does know her stuff, so no problem with working with her. And boy, I hope we do have a parking problem. I think there will be some walking traffic, um, and I've been over Michael's house at all different hours of the day. They are pretty strict on enforcing that parking thing. If someone attempts to park there on that wrong side, they will come and tick it. They don't tow unless it's a snow thing. Um, but it's pretty clear that even if you tried parking on the other side, even another car can't get through, it's a fairly narrow street. Um, but I think it's something where, uh, we're communicating with the customers, and as people come in, we explain it to them, like, this is where we'd rather see you. Or by the way, we have these, uh, I say start with four spots like you might vote on, and then if there's a problem, maybe increase to six, and work something else out with the landlord. One of the greatest things about East Hampton is that we're not pulling change out of our pocket all the time to park. And in saying that, I'm comparing it to Northampton, um, so I don't agree with all their parking rules. I think it will be okay. But I think with the access to the lot, or maybe there's a deal that could be struck with Mike Supranop from Big E's, to say, hey, this is only, um, four nights after five till about ten, and maybe a Sunday brunch, you know, could I rent the farther park of the, part of the parking lot, relate that information to my customers? Uh, because Mike is a great guy, he does a lot for this community. Um, so it wouldn't be right to just say, oh, well, you can park over there, but maybe there's something that we could do to work with him to work that out, without Michael having to spend a lot of money, um, in doing so, so. I just have those couple of things, I was taking little notes, so I hope that helps.
Thank you very much.
Alright, thank you.
Alright, anybody else have any other questions for the applicant? Comments?
Looking for a motion?
I guess.
It looks like, I just want to clarify, I'm not yet making a motion. Looks like, uh, we had two potential stipulations. Uh, one was that the applicant leased four lots on what street? Help me so I can work this correct.
The parking lot's Union Court.
Union Court. Do we want to be that specific?
Um, I don't, I mean, I think we can, yeah.
I was actually going to probably pull up the parcel ID number and put it in the decision.
Okay, I won't be able to throw that into the motion, so hopefully you'll-
No, I know.
Okay. So I'm just going to work that one condition out, alright, and then I'll put it in the motion at the end, so if that's okay?
You're going to add comedy?
The applicant will lease, um-
Here, you want to look at the language?
Yeah, that'd be great.
But we're going to specify that it's a lot?
The applicant shall lease four off-street parking spaces from a specific lot, fill in copy there.
Uh, it looks like it's lot fifty-two dash sixty-seven.
Okay.
Thirty-seven forty-three Union Street.
And make patrons and tenants aware of the availability of the spaces.
Can you repeat that? Yeah, repeat that again, please.
I guess it's not tenants anymore, right, because we're not doing the end?
Yeah, you're right, so make patrons.
Yeah.
The applicant shall leave, lease, excuse me, four off-street parking spaces.
Hold on, shall lease four off-street parking spaces at Union Court.
Thank you, at Union Court. And make patrons aware of the availability of the spaces. There's a little bit more we're adding here.
Hold on.
Tell me when you're ready.
Aware of availability.
It's a process, sorry.
And make patrons aware of the availability of spaces, of off, off-street parking spaces, okay?
Next sentence.
Okay.
Evidence of the lease shall be submitted to the planning board and building department as a condition of the certificate of occupancy.
Evidence of lease agreement shall be provided to planning department and building department.
As a condition of the certificate of occupancy.
A condition of the CO. I just, so you're aware, I never, I never sign off on COs.
So is that an irrelevant addition clause?
I, I'm just saying that it, it could go to the building department, and he could do a CO and I would never know.
So, should we just say planning board?
He wouldn't look at the, at the special part, or the site plan?
I mean, he would, but, um, but, I would, I would hope that he would. But I'm, what I'm just saying is there's no sign off for the planning department on a, on a CO. On building permits, I have to sign off on them before they can even be granted. And they need, I need to make sure that whatever they're showing Joe is what they got approved for, but with a CO, I don't see anything.
If she's not going to look at it, what's the point?
I mean, you could still put it in there, and we could stick it in the file.
Well, to give it to the building department.
At least you have something in there, and-
We could leave it then, uh, omit, omit, planning board and leave, evidence of the lease shall be submitted to the building department as a condition of the certificate of occupancy, or equally.
He's not going to know that.
He's, he's not, I, I mean, I would say leave it with the, I say leave it as is, and then that way, it goes into the planning board file. And we have it on file, so if there's ever a question, if there's ever a complaint about parking, we have a copy of the lease agreement in our files. It's like having a backup system. If Joe can't find it, at least I could find it, and everything.
So we leave it.
Okay.
Alright, so we have one condition down. We have a second condition. And that's that the applicant shall comply with the Board of Health regulations and requirements and obtain all needed licenses and permits, which of course you have to do regardless of this. But it just makes us feel comfy and sleep well.
So the applicant shall comply with-
The applicant shall comply with the Board of Health regulations and requirements.
Board of Health regs, and-
And obtain all needed licenses and permits.
And, and, oop, and obtain all proper, what'd you say?
All needed licenses.
All needed.
All needed licenses and permits.
And, permits.
Alright.
Any other conditions, anybody feels the need to add?
Just a house.
I think we've covered it all, right?
Okay. So, I motion to, to approve the site plan for five Chapman Ave with the two aforementioned conditions.
Can I get a second?
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? You're opposed, Chat?
Yep.
Okay.
So three-one?
Yes.
Are you, you're voting too?
Yeah.
Alright. Four-one.
Four-one.
Okay. Motion passes.
Alright. So, written decision, what?
So, um, you have fourteen days to draft the decision, and then since it's a site plan approval, there's no appeal period, so you're good to go after the decision stamped at the city clerk.
Alright.
Thank you very much.
Best of luck, guys.
Do well.
And just, just to make you aware, I'm, I am going to give a copy of your, your, this to the health department so that she has it prior to you going to see her, okay?
What's the matter?
Alright. Have a good night, guys. Alright, moving on to old business, the sign ordinance.
That's by a little way, is that yours?
I think this.
I have the next one.
Okay.
You got it, or?
I got it.
He's got it down here for long.
No, no, I got it, and I-
So there should be a draft right in front of you, somewhere. I put it in your seat. Okay, so, where are we at? Okay, so I started to populate, um, the outline that we talked about last time. So, we'll just walk through this bit by bit here. So section ten point oh-two applicability, I eliminated out of doors, so that's now removed. Under definitions, I'm just starting to put words and terms that I'm coming across when I'm drafting it that I think need to be defined. So I haven't put a definition in there yet, but I'm just placeholdering them, so I remembered to put something in there.
And that'll continue to grow, right?
And that'll continue to grow, and then we can work on what those definitions are over time. So, awning, uh, awning sign, standing sign, wall sign, and the window sign, we agreed to that language from Wellesley, and I put that in there.
And now I have a question about that.
Of course, of course you do.
I get to put on my lawyer hat and think of ways around these things now.
Yes.
So, I'm curious if we want to limit, uh, we came up with that awesome one-foot exception of things that are attached.
Yeah, yeah.
But when I read this, that's only for the illuminated signs. Would you agree that that's how this reads?
And/or.
And/or, any illuminated sign installed inside the building within one foot. We want it to cover all of them, right? Like, I think if it's a, like a cardboard sign that's hanging- Like, I think if it's like a cardboard sign that's hanging, you know, six inches inside a window, it's still a sign, right?
Yep.
All of which must be, no.
So I'm wondering if we want to move that phrase into like, any sign attached, painted or otherwise similarly affixed directly to the glass surface of a door or window.
Within one foot.
Either inside or the?
Within one foot of the glass surface of a window or door.
Yeah, either inside or outside the building. Including any illuminated sign. Although I don't know if we need to have the illuminated sign in there. I mean, that would be a sign, right?
Yep.
So maybe we just take out illuminated sign.
Hold on, hold on, okay. So, any sign attached, painted or otherwise similarly affixed directly to the glass surface of a window or door within one foot.
Wait, no, we got a better solution here. What if you just cross out any illuminated sign? So it says your definition and/or installed inside the building within one foot of the glass.
Any sign of, either inside this, there we go. Within one foot of the glass surface of a window or door.
Any illuminated sign is the only three words you're talking about.
Yeah, I think that, that covers it.
Oh, so keep installed within the building? Whoops.
Any illuminated sign, that's it.
Any sign attached, painted or otherwise similarly affixed directly to the glass surface of a window or door either inside or outside the building.
And/or installed inside the building. Within one foot of the glass surface of a window or door.
And/or installed inside the building within one foot of the glass surface of the window or door and designed to be visible from the exterior of the structure.
I think that covers it.
Okay.
Sounds like a window sign to me.
Good job.
Why's it gotta be within a foot?
Because, because if you.
It can be six inches.
Because you can't regulate.
Well, we could make it closer. I mean, we were trying to think of how close to a window you could hang a sign that's meant to be a sign that's visible outside.
If you're walking on a sidewalk and looking inside today, it could be just over the surface, only a couple of inches.
Well, I think it's within one foot.
It's within, yeah, it's one foot or less.
So if it's one inch, yeah, anything up to a foot.
All right.
Foot being the maximum.
Yeah.
We don't want to make it like six feet because then you're regulating the inside.
Then it's like a sign that's sitting on the counter or something like that.
So if a person puts up a sign and it's six inches from the window, that's still okay?
It's still okay.
It's covered by this definition, it's regular.
Think of like CVS. So when you go to CVS, they have all of that signage that's in the windows that's facing out.
Right.
And all of the combines.
Hanging, it's not even attached to the window, it just hangs like three inches in, yeah.
Right.
We're gonna get those inside the statue, boom. At least in our very rough draft, that's.
You want me to tell them about it?
No, I'm gonna be challenging it.
Okay. So then, mostly what I kind of focused on was the administrative side of this. And I kind of bounced around a little bit, so there's some holes, but. So this is basically the application process. And we have agreed to being filed in the office of the, oh, it says inspector, I think it's gotta say commissioner. Okay, so an application for a sign permit may be made at the same time as an application for a building permit. When a building permit is not required, a sign permit may be issued in conjunction with an application for a certificate of occupancy.
But the word "may" there, that you may get it at the same time as a building permit. Can you also get it any other time?
You can, you can come get a, so, you could get it at any time, really. But you're gonna, if you're a new business, say you're a downtown business or you're renting a downtown spot, you, you want to do renovations. So you're getting a building permit because you're adding a bathroom or you're taking down walls or something. Or if you don't need to do that, you're just looking to have a CO. And you want to get, you want to change the sign because you don't want the old business's sign there. So it would be in conjunction with that.
So is this, I know you like to design these so that it's like a new business in town gets to know what they're doing. Are you saying to them, you can piggyback these two things together? Like, that's the idea, but you don't have to, right?
You don't have to.
If you don't know what your sign's gonna be and you get your special permit or whatever, you can then come and just get a sign permit because now we know what our sign is.
That makes, now I understand.
Or you can do it at the same time, it'll be part of it, or a CO.
Right. It's also trying to make it more efficient for the building inspector to some extent too so that he's not reviewing multiple, you know what I mean?
And he liked this, right? Didn't he reply all in the email?
He replied all through the email.
So, I mean, that's a, that's a good sign since he's the one that's gonna be administering it.
That's what I told him, I needed him to look at it before the meeting, so. And then, this is all new. We, I mean, there's been, there was stuff in the old ordinance about some things that needed to be submitted, but this makes it really clear.
Yep.
So, if for standing signs, it has to have a location plan or a survey showing the property upon which the subject sign is to be located, the proposed location of the subject sign on the property, the distance of the proposed sign from the subject property's boundaries and all existing structures on the building on the subject property. All such plans shall be to illegible engineers' scale.
Now, what does that mean?
That means don't show up with a hand-drawn, out-of-scale plan.
Is that a common term, a parlance, or?
Yes. You find it in zoning, that, you know, plans, plans drafted by an engineer, architect, landscape architect. You know, it's gotta be to scale. You can't have somebody coming in saying, well, my, my building is here and I want to put the sign here and I think about from here to here is maybe around 10 feet. Because then the scales are all off and he can't really tell.
So does it just have to be to scale or does it have to be professionally done? Like, does it need to be?
It just has to be to scale and somebody can do that on a home, a home computer.
This gentleman here, if he wanted to have a sign in his front yard, he doesn't necessarily need to hire an architect to do professional drawings.
No.
It just has to show the distances and be to scale.
Right.
Okay.
And he can hand, you can hand draw that too.
Right.
It's not saying you don't, you know, it just has to be.
It's just gotta be to scale.
It just has to be to scale, right.
Would it be, I'm not quite certain, I have to admit too, that stood out to me, like, I just didn't know what it was. And we have this section of definitions and it's really, is that the kind of thing we might throw in there? Legible engineer could backgo in definition to help other people like me that hadn't, had a clue? And then are gonna say, what does this mean, coming to ask you? No. I see that as a no.
It seems like a goofy thing to put in there a little bit. Because if, if you're in land development, you know what a scale is. I think where it may be confusing is for the, is for somebody like him who doesn't have any.
I mean, to scale, I would have understood, but to illegible engineer's scale, like, I don't know what that is.
Well, we can take out the legible engineer and just say, such plan shall be, shall be drawn to scale.
Okay, and I don't want to lessen your good work, legible engineer.
I stole it, I didn't come up with it.
Drawn to scale is more, because I like your general philosophy of being written for, you know, Five Chapman Ave, like, so that somebody doesn't need to know what they're doing before they read this. So maybe just, like, such plan shall be drawn to scale.
Shall be drawn to scale.
Love it.
Probably conveys that information.
So that'll be the same for all of them.
Right, yeah.
Yeah, that's mentioned all the way down through the whole thing.
Yeah.
Oh yeah, we have architect next. Is there an engineer?
You just take that part out.
Doesn't matter now.
Yeah.
I want a scale, is there a developer's scale?
I'll bring a scale to the meeting. It's like a tri, it's a ruler that has three sides.
Right.
It has a different scale on each side, so. One to 10, one to 20, one to 30.
Yep.
All right, okay. So for all signs, dimensional drawings of the sign including lettering, borders, proposed color scheme, which maybe we shouldn't have in there because some of the stuff that I've been reading about First Amendment rights is even colors can't be regulated. But, it's not saying that it's, it's not saying he's gonna deny it, he's just wants to know what it's gonna look like.
And it's not regulated by color, but the color itself may create, like, we were talking about, like, color can sometimes be a safety concern or something like that, right?
Right.
If you have a sign that's shaped and looks like a stop sign, but it's blue, that might be acceptable, whereas a red one next to a road wouldn't.
All you're saying here is we're not telling you what color you can do, it just has to be legible.
It just has to, right, so.
I think that's valid.
Okay, height and other design elements, such drawing shall be drawn to scale.
Perfect.
For wall, awning or window signs, a dimensional drawing or photograph of the facade indicating the placement of signs, the area of the facade of the business establishment and the height of the sign, such drawing shall be drawn to scale. Color photographs of the property, including all buildings in the proposed sign location. And for all signs requiring a special permit, a copy of the decision from the zoning board of appeals indicating approval of the special permit. Okay? Okay. So, permit fee, I scratched out city council because I found in the existing sign ordinance that the fees are set by the building commissioner with approval from the mayor.
Okay.
So that's from our existing. Processing time, permit issuance. The building commissioner shall process and complete the accurate sign permit applications within 30 days of the building commissioner's receipt of a complete application and upon remittance of the appropriate fee.
Do we need and accurate? I don't understand what that's doing there. Shall process and complete and accurate? Is that supposed to be inaccurate or should it just be?
Probably inaccurate.
But should it just be, shall process?
It's probably a typo because I had a, I was reading and typing.
Or process any complete or a complete inaccurate sign permit?
Let me, let me check the ordinance I stole from.
Where you stole it from?
Hold on.
A complete inaccurate, right?
Ah, where is it?
What if it just says, shall process all sign permit applications within 30 days of the receipt of a complete application?
Yeah. That would be bad.
Well, it's complete, it's gotta be accurate.
Open it.
Where am I at?
Shall process and complete all?
Well, I don't even think you need to do and complete, I mean.
Oh, I, I.
Shall process all.
I messed around with it, so hold on. Uh, process and complete.
That's easier.
Jessica, what if it just says, shall process all sign permit applications within 30 days of the building commissioner's receipt of a complete application? It already says complete application, number one.
Shall process.
All.
All.
Sign.
Sign permit applications within 30 days of the building commissioner's receipt of a complete application.
And the appropriate freight fee.
And that's not plural on application there.
The appropriate fee. Okay. All right. Application rejection, resubmission. The building commissioner shall reject any application that is incomplete, that contains false material statements or omissions or that is a sign which would violate any standards within the section within 30 days of receipt of said application. Failure to act if no sign permit has been issued within 30 days after the application has been made as shall be deemed to be denied, which is kind of opposite of what we normally do.
What we typically do, but, I mean.
Or we could flip it.
It's just a sign ordinance, it's not.
We could flip it the other way.
Well, but, I mean, I'm just trying to make sure that we have discretion to deny it by inaction, right? Like, like, I think the statute for the zoning stuff, like the special permits and things, we can't. But this isn't under any of those statutes, so I think we can set the default as denial.
I stole it from somebody.
Yeah, and I'd rather deny than approve by inaction.
Is that in general or?
Just in life, in life.
Then you wouldn't do anything all day, you'd just sit around and go, denied.
I mean.
For the sign ordinance, part five.
I do it, it's check off, deny.
I mean, do people feel differently? I mean, if we don't do, if, if the building department doesn't do anything for 30 days, do we want the sign to be approved or do we want that to be considered a denial and they have to?
I think it should be approved. This guy can't get off his buns and get it, get it taken care of.
Yeah, and that would be his fault, not the applicant's fault.
Exactly.
So that would be approved.
What if he's hit by a bus?
Then what, I mean, what, what if?
Then there's gotta be someone to take his space.
What if he didn't approve because he found a piece that was incomplete in the application? Would that require him to say denied and make you restart the process? Or what if he went to you and said, I just need to get this information?
He actually has to reject it if it's incomplete.
He has to if it's incomplete, I guess.
Then it, I'm tending to agree with you two, believe it or not.
Yeah, if he doesn't act, it's approved.
Okay.
All right. Sure.
You know, I have to say that.
I don't think it's, I don't think it's a huge deal in a way.
Thanks, Jimmy.
Okay.
Thanks for the endorsement.
Should it be determined that the sign permit was issued in error and/or pursuant to an application containing false information or omission or a sign not meeting the standards of the section, the building commissioner shall revoke said permit and the subject sign will be immediately removed.
Yeah.
Jesse's right about the pluralization of omissions.
Yeah, false information or omissions.
Omission.
Can we back up to number three real quick?
James had another plural.
I just, I just wanted to make sure you caught that pluralization where it said, the, the last sentence there, well, I guess it's all one sentence, but it says of a complete application.
I took it out, I took, I took the S out, yeah.
Thank you.
Like I said, I was sort of, I don't know, under the gun on this one. So I'm sure there's tons of typos.
I think that's right, I mean, issued in error is kind of a broad brush where you've, conceivably that could be building department error and now you're taking somebody's sign down, but.
But that's, but that happens now.
That's the way it goes.
Well, for instance, if there's, there was a not, there was a case recently in the building department ZBA where the building inspector provided misinformation to the applicant. The applicant went ahead and then he called them out on it in terms of being a violation of the zoning code. And they came back and said, but you said that we could do this and it, it doesn't matter. Even if it's an error, the zoning code is the zoning code and that's what holds, so.
It doesn't matter? There isn't like a way to argue or anything?
The ZBA didn't buy it.
Maybe better lawyers.
You talking about that, you talking about that lady with that fence?
That's pretty tough though.
Yes, I was trying not to, I was trying not to bring it up, but thank you very much for putting it on the public records.
I was at that meeting that night and that ZBA that night, if I had anything to do with that.
Careful, careful, you're on, you're on call access.
I would have something to look into it.
All right.
Anyway.
All right, so, okay, that's good. We, expiration?
Okay, expiration date. A sign permit shall become null and void if the work for which the permit was issued has not been completed within a period of six months from the date the permit was issued, provided however that the building commissioner may, in his or her discretion, issue extensions covering a period not to exceed one year from the date of the original permit. So basically, it's another six-month extension.
What, what does that extension look like? It's, it's, they decide whether they want to issue it, but is it a written extent? I mean, what is that?
I don't know how they, I don't know how they would do their paperwork. I presume that there would be some documentation saying that they have an extension.
So, if, if someone were to call you on it after seven months, they'd have to prove that they have an extension or something?
Well, well, yeah.
Okay, so, all the other stuff was skipped for now.
Yep.
I went down to enforcement. The building commissioner is hereby authorized to enforce all the provisions of this section. I didn't get to the maintenance and removal, abandoned signs, dangerous defective signs or removal of signs yet. So I just kind of jumped into the appeals process, because this has been...
This is the interesting one here.
Well, this is the one that, I mean, I believe that everybody should have some form of relief, but right now it's so arbitrary.
Yeah.
And it's...
Not arbitrary?
I mean, that's, I mean, that's just...
Doesn't this look like the ZBA can give a sign to anyone they want?
Well, this is where, I think where we need to talk about is, you know, do we want it to be, like, how do we want the findings to be? And so, so I was thinking, we may wanna hold this or think about this, because as we go through, I think, you know, for example, the mills have always come to the ZBA looking for relief from the sign ordinance, because the signage that they want to put on, because based on the scale and the mass of those buildings in comparison to one another, warns them to have a huge sign like Eastworks does.
Right.
That you can see from the street, because it matches the scale. If you hold them to the same standard as any other business in the mill industrial district, so, you know, do we then just provide, know what those potential reliefs are and make sure we have language in there that addresses that? And that this is really for almost kind of like a variance situation?
That's exactly what I was thinking.
Or, you know, or do we leave this a little bit more wishy-washy? So I think that's sort of where we need to look.
I guess we see where we come with the guidelines, but my thought is that, I mean, we've talked about this, there've been so many exceptions to the sign ordinance that that tells you the sign ordinance needs to be fixed, right? And that you should put that in there. So like, if we know things like the mill buildings, we can designate signs into this ordinance. And my thought is that there's gotta be something unique relating to, you know, the structure, the land or something like a variance, that makes it an exception, as opposed to just being like, well, my sign's really cool and it, and it doesn't, and the neighbors don't mind. Right, like, that's basically what this says, is like, my neighbors don't care and the sign otherwise would be cool and it doesn't, you know?
Well, except it does talk about the scale, which I thought was good. That it's, that it's gotta be in, and again, I don't like that term reasonable.
But reasonable relation.
I don't like that because it's really arbitrary, so, um...
Alright, so maybe we set the whole appeal process aside until we figure out how...
I don't know, I mean, some of the things that, you know, under number two, I didn't know where we wanted to go. Where, what is the circumstance that you can actually ask for relief? And I think that's a really important question and kind of what you're getting to, Jesse, is that, is it, is it anytime that the building inspector denies your permit, can you then go to the ZBA? Kind of like, like a special permit or a, a building decision, you know? That there's an appeal process for that decision, is it, you know, what is it for? Like, what's the circumstance that would allow you to go to get a special permit? And then I think that, from there, then we can sort of start talking about the details.
I hate to throw a kinker in here.
You do not, Jim.
Well, no, I've, my wife and I, we go out and sometimes on Sundays and drive around and I see different things. What about movable signs?
We'll get there.
That's definitely one of the definitions.
Is that gonna be part of it?
Yes, it's in the outline.
Right.
It's in there, we just, we're not dealing with the regs of the signs quite yet, we haven't got there yet.
You should see the ones they have out there, it is a mess.
My inclination is to try and give her something so we can try to refine a little more each time, rather than bypassing, and I, I, I mean, it's tough, but I kind of like the idea that, that, you know, you have an appeal process after you've been denied.
Yeah.
And I don't know that it requires much more than that, in terms of the criteria for, you know, what...
How you get in front of the ZBA?
Yeah.
Right.
In terms of what the ZBA then looks for, you know, that, we need to hand it down a bit more, but...
In general, it's still just gonna be, Jessica, regular, like, can't you appeal any building inspector's decision to the ZBA?
Yeah, I guess you can, so it doesn't matter, so that's irrelevant.
So you can, so, so I think that they'll sort of be able to get in front, I mean, I don't imagine like a flow of, you know, fifteen, that's the concern, right, is that you're gonna have fifteen sign appeals every night and the ZBA is gonna be locked down. But I don't think that's gonna be the regular course of business.
Well, doesn't, doesn't it cost the individual some cash to get in front of the ZBA?
Yeah, right, yeah, building inspector appeal, there's a fee.
Yeah, what does that cost, a hundred bucks or something like that?
I don't think it's that high, is it?
Jessica, what does it cost to get in front of the ZBA?
For a building inspector appeal.
Uh, it's cheaper than special permits.
It's like forty bucks or something.
No, it's more than that, I don't wanna say it's like seventy-five.
Yeah.
So...
But we don't really want to use that as the barrier to an appeal, right? I mean, it's...
No. No, if a person wants to appeal, they've gotta pay the fee, but...
But I think, I think they can just by right, appeal the building inspector's decision anyway. I, I'm inclined to go with you, Jim, is that you, if you want to come to the ZBA and say that they made a mistake, you can, but if we create a very strict guideline for when you can grant relief, then a frivolous appeal will be heard, it will just be rejected.
Exactly, I feel that's the way to proceed with it.
That's, we gotta give them something to work with.
So that it's, I mean, it's basically a by right appeal, that anytime you're denied, somebody can appeal to the ZBA and...
But they can do that anyway.
Right, but we're gonna put off the hard part of setting the standards for the ZBA to grant a special permit till another day.
Okay, so we're not gonna do that part.
But the idea being that you, you do have an appeal by right, and if it's frivolous, then you just won't, if you don't meet the requirements, you'll just get rejected.
And I think that even though you're right that it happens automatically, for the sake of making it understandable to someone reading this, it's, it's good to kind of mention that they have that, that right.
Yeah, but if we put it down in the right wording, the ZBA will have an easier task to deny.
That, I mean, that's what we, that's, I think a chore for another day. But yeah, we do need to figure out what the standard's gonna be for a special permit.
Now, one last piece with regard to, so we're saying it's, and I like your way of saying it, by right. You mentioned here a deadline for filing for their appeal.
Mm-hmm, like, right now, there's a, if there's an appeal, there's a twenty day appeal period for a special permit. That's typical for special permits, that the planning board and the ZBA grant.
Because if it's five years ago, it doesn't qualify anymore. So if we don't set a deadline, we're allowing these kinds of things to happen.
Right, I think you definitely need to set some sort of appeal timeline.
We should probably also look at what the standard appeal of building inspector's decision limit is, right? Because you can generally just appeal that.
Uh...
Yeah, because...
But I, I don't know if that's every decision, I know that, like, the ZBA deals with that appeals from building inspector's decisions, but I don't know if it's like a global appeal of anything they decide.
Alright, so, I'm still confused, and so, what is the circumstance that somebody can seek a special permit from the ZBA?
But if it's denied.
Only if it's denied?
Yeah.
Right.
Okay.
And what else would you?
I don't know, I'm just asking.
Yeah, anybody, anybody who's denied...
I'm just looking at some of our other examples here, and I've got one here that says, right to appeal, any applicant for a permit, any person who's been ordered by the building inspector to incur, incur expense in connection with a sign, or any person aggrieved by...
I was gonna say, you might want to appeal if you were challenging a sign and they, and the building inspector allowed it.
So, so, it's not just the, it's not just the person who's putting up the sign, but it's, anybody else could appeal the decision too.
Right.
Right.
I hadn't considered that, that's a good point. Um, in which case...
You really be careful with the wording.
In which case it's, uh, any, I would change it, this is, I'm throwing this out here. Any awarded sign permit can be appealed within the deadline for filing, this, from the granting point of, of the permit or the denial.
I think you'd be like even broader and just say like, any aggrieved party may challenge any building inspector's decision with respect to a sign permit or something like that. I mean, make it as broad, I don't know, I mean...
So you have, and I'll just use twenty days for now, we still have to hammer that down, but you have twenty days to issue an appeal for a denial or...
Approval.
Or approval.
Yeah, I mean, I don't know, I'm just...
Okay, here's a, here's one from Belchertown. Any person having an interest in the sign
Yep.
or the property may appeal the determination of the building commissioner ordering removal or compliance by filing a written notice with the town clerk within thirty days.
Does that person have to be a resident?
In other words, if a resident doesn't like that sign, they can appeal it?
It didn't say resident, it said any person.
Any person, right.
That's the question, right, so like, I mean, you can...
Having an interest in the sign.
You can sort of see both sides, right? Like, as a resident of East Hampton, you know, if we're gonna, if, if the building inspector approves and Nini's putting up a forty by twenty foot neon sign, I should be able to challenge that. On the other side, it's not my property, I don't own the business, and I'm not in a butter, so, I don't know, I kind of...
So, so, so here's what we know for sure. The trigger point is the issuance, is the issuance of a sign permit or the denial of sign permit? One of those is the trigger of the time at which the deadline begins.
Yeah.
And the people that can appeal are either the person awarded the sign permit or a resident.
Anybody can appeal, the question is whether they have standing in the courts. And that's for the courts to decide, not the planning.
Right.
In my opinion, right, Jesse?
Well, unless we're appealing, I mean, we're setting up an appeal process to the ZBA though.
To the ZBA.
So we're deciding standing for, I mean, so that's the whole point, so if we say, we could say, any applicant or a butter or owner, or we could say any resident, or we could say anybody, I mean, you could...
I prefer the resident.
Or any one, right.
If someone doesn't...
There are plenty of, there are plenty of business owners that don't live in East Hampton.
Right.
So you can't say resident.
Okay, that's fair.
So you could say applicant, owner or resident.
Right.
Which, which eliminates a concerned area resident who's not a citizen of East Hampton.
Applicant, owner or resident of East Hampton.
Of East Hampton, I mean, that's kind of...
Because Pride Stores comes in here and they apply for a sign permit.
Yeah.
You know, they're, they're an applicant, they're not based here, do you know what I mean?
I do.
Yeah.
I mean, that also gives one other condition, and what if it's that same person who then wants to challenge someone else's sign? They're not a resident here, but they do business here, so...
Right, that, that's a good point, right? So if you, if you, my Nini's sign, I just grabbed them out of my head, but if you're, you know, the next door business and you are not a resident, you wouldn't fall under that definition.
You wouldn't, no, so you couldn't. Which is, and I want them to, you know, what I don't want is someone who's visiting from, you know, pick someplace, Australia, and, and says, I don't like that sign, to, to start a process, you know?
Well, they don't have to be here during the two, the twenty days after.
Which may be, may be why that's the language, any person who has been ordered by the building inspector, or by the building, never mind, to incur expense in connection with the sign, like, I'm thinking, you know, the forty by twenty foot sign goes in next to my building and all of a sudden I have to spend money to do something different to my sign.
Yeah, but it hasn't been ordered to incur an expense.
No, you haven't been ordered.
I think that's to get the building owner or the applicant, right? So it's like, I have to put up the sign even though I didn't, I don't own the building.
My, I mean, my thing, the people that are involved are the, the, the sign owner, a resident, or someone who does business in the community, but I don't know how to word that last part.
Well, that's gonna be pretty broad, right? So, I mean, you could be...
Yeah, anyone who do business in the community.
Yeah.
I could be driving through from my house in Florence and going to Dunkin' Donuts, I've done business in East Hampton.
Well, and, I mean, is that, so the question is, would you rather eliminate a local business who has a concern about it but is owned by a non-resident? Or would you rather include a non-resident who's concerned about the sign that was just approved? I don't know how much either is really gonna happen, but...
Yeah, I should just pick it and keep it to applicant, owner and resident.
Alright, I gotta say something there.
Please do, Harry.
Alright, this doesn't, this doesn't really pertain to this, but it's definitely signs. What if a sign becomes damaged? Can somebody make, somebody repair the sign?
We have a dangerous or defective sign section, please hold to the, to future meeting.
There's something going on in Northampton right now with that Calvin sign, with that AB mission, and they're really complaining over there.
Yeah.
Would anybody have any teeth in the, in the, in the fight?
We can, we can, we can talk about that in section ten point oh eight three, when we get there.
I mean, all we're trying to hammer out right now is just this, is just this part two of the ten eight five, which is, and I, and I think we've got the two parts of it when it triggers, right?
Right.
Yeah.
That we have, are you comfortable with the trigger?
I'm unclear.
Any building inspector's decision in response to an application, rejection or denial.
Yeah, that, that's our trigger.
I had any aggrieved party may appeal, I have only issuance or denial.
Yeah.
Okay.
Those are the triggers. We still need a deadline time, and then we need who the aggrieved parties are.
I'm inclined to go broad and just say, anyone. I, I mean, I don't know, I, I feel like...
I agree with that.
Yeah.
All you're doing is you're getting a hearing in front of the ZBA about what's gonna happen.
If you think it's worth it, you gotta pay the money, okay?
I don't know, I mean...
That's a good point.
We can, and this is a classic example, right, where we can get input from the community, because I don't know what people are gonna be thinking, but...
I think it's a good place to start from, so...
I don't know where you want to draw that line, so maybe we just don't draw a line.
I just think you say everybody, and then I, I, I agree, I let them go through the process.
Right.
Don't deny somebody the right to have, to go, to have due process.
Have the special permit.
I'm convinced.
Yeah.
You know, everybody should have the right to due process, whether we think they have a right to have it or not.
And we've all thought of people in each of these classes that we were gonna kick out that would have a valid claim, right? So I'd rather have some frivolous somebody who drives through from Westfield and files a claim than a business owner next door who can't, so...
Yeah.
Okay.
So now we know who the, who, who the appealing person can be. And the only thing we don't have is a deadline for filing.
But we were gonna check on building permit appeal deadlines first?
Or what the language, I mean, I don't know if any decision by the building inspector can just be appealed by right already or what, but we should certainly be consistent with that if it is.
Alright.
So I'm gonna use the language, any person having an interest in a sign or the property.
Wait, no, but there's, it's more than that, because I think it...
I'm in Belchertown, I'm...
I think an interest, I think having an interest in the sign isn't like I'm interested in it. I think having an interest in the sign is usually like a, a legal investment, like a ownership or...
So you want it even broader than that?
Yeah, because I don't think that gets a neighbor, I think anyone having an interest...
Anyone.
Yeah, I think anyone aggrieved by a building inspector's decision.
Alright, hold on, anyone aggrieved? I can't spell. Aggrieved.
By the building... By the building commissioner's decision.
Has the right to appeal?
May appeal to the ZBA within X days of the decision in question.
Is that what I'm hearing on that, you're gonna look?
I think, I think, yeah, I was trying to figure out.
Within X number of days.
Of the issuance of the decision.
And I, I like your idea of going with whatever the standard for the building commissioner already is, if they have a standard.
Yeah.
It's issuance of the permit, because it's not a decision.
But it could be the denial, issuance or denial of the permit.
Okay, I agree with that.
Issuance of or denial, issuance of the permit?
Or denial of the permit.
Or denial.
Yeah, it can work either way.
Okay.
Within...
Anyone aggrieved by the building commissioner's decision may appeal to the ZBA